Two confirmation approval claims.
Hi, everyone. The total claims for this month is five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, the breakdown for that is the Fund One total is three hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. That is a difference from last year of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two dollars and fifty-three cents more. That is paid this year over last year. There are several reasons for that. Um, the first is that we issued a payment to Kenny for our workers' compensation. That was approximately seventy-one thousand dollars. This payment was made in January of last year. Um, the rates for each category have remained the same. However, we realized about a thirty-two thousand dollar increase in the premium this year due to the exposure. Also, we issued a payment to First Insurance Group for about fifty-five thousand dollars. And as we discussed last month, the vendor had switched from quarterly payment plan to, um, all the payments were made within the first six months of the policy. So, we had four payments with it that were sixty days apart. So, we won't have any more payments for the rest of the year for that. And then also, we issued a payment to, um, Stiles Carter Accounting Firm for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Last year, we paid for our auditing services in two different disbursements. Um, so again, it's a timing issue. And then finally, the October-November federal health reimbursements to the Kentucky State Treasurer were both posted this month. So, again, that's about an eighty-seven hundred dollars additional that was paid this month. Again, a timing issue. And there were no payments from, uh, Fund Four Hundred for debt service.
Any questions? Paul, who's in favor of approving the claim disbursement?
I'll make a motion to approve. One second.
Thank you. Paul, who's in favor, say goodbye to Fangon?
Uh-huh.
Those throwing down. Item financial report.
Reviewing our treasurer's report for the month of November ending, uh, we have a cash balance that's been verified by the bank statement and in our NUC system as seven million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and two cents. If you'll notice on the board of bottom portion of this statement, you'll see the general fund has about seven and a half million dollars. We will make a transfer, if you recall, from the general fund to the building fund to pay for our debt service payment. So, that's gonna be almost, uh, one point eight million dollars. That we'll make typically, we do that in February, so I'm just waiting to make that payment. You'll see, that's why it's overdrawn quite a bit. Um, next this month, um, actually, next month, you're going to review the draft budget for your approval. Uh, at this time, we're conducting needs assessments with the schools and departments to determine what should be included in next year's budgets. Uh, there are many unknown factors to consider at this stage, such as the implications from the pension reform and the state budget cuts. So, the draft budget will closely mirror that of the current budget that we have. And then to add to the budget discussion, on December seventh, the Kentucky Retirement System adopted the fiscal year eighteen-nineteen employer contribution rate for school districts. So, this is gonna be the classified staff and the non-hazardous fund. So, as projected, the school district will be required to contribute twenty-eight point zero-five percent of the employee payroll into CERS. And this is up from nineteen point one-eight that we're currently paying. So, this new rate will cost the district an additional four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars next year. And that is based on current salaries. So, as you're aware, our employees will have a step increase and then our exposure will be more, our liability will be more. There's a possibility that in the next session, the state legislature will enact a phase-in clause, and that would allow employers to pay over the next several years in order to make adjustments and meet their current obligations. So, we'll be watching those developments closely over the next coming months, and we'll update you as soon as we have the information. And then finally, for an update on tax collection, um, through the month ending November, we've collected eighty percent of the tax in real estate and tangible property tax bills that were issued. This compares to eighty-five percent, um, that we received last year at the same period. So, this verifies that our collections are coming in as scheduled. Uh, we anticipate receiving certifications for the distilled spirits this month from the Department of Revenue, and when we get those, we'll issue the manual bills. Um, so all in all, this has been a very smooth and common tax collection season.
And, excuse me, the four hundred thousand, we're talking about the extra that we contributed to our state retirement fund?
Yeah, for classified staff, will be the portion that we pay.
The CERS piece in the pension. That doesn't count the TRS. We'll be able to bring that good news to you hopefully in, uh, January.
Wonderful. So, uh, so these are just the special funds that we're required to support the state.
Yes. And this was, we learned of this, uh, right before all the pension news broke.
Right, this all this stuff's been ongoing.
You haven't heard a lot about this. It's kinda got lost in the shuffle, wouldn't you agree?
We just wanna be sure that this is just something that we have no control over.
Exactly.
This, no, no.
And your, your local county governments, uh, city government, they're all gonna be hit, just like us. What was the percent of increase again?
Yeah, twenty-eight.
So, our liability could be pointed right at our liability, about four hundred thousand dollars. Nelson Cammies Fiscal Court's liability is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So, it's significant for all entities throughout the state.
It's gonna be conversation for our next time, so.
You said something about, uh, phase-in clause?
Mm-hmm. So, there's, uh, an option for the legislature to enact a phase-in clause. So, again, the amount that we will pay back will be over a period of years instead of all at once beginning July one. So, that will make it a little bit district, a little bit easier for the districts and other entities to meet that requirement. So, it'll still be the same amount, it'll just be portioned out.
Is our interest clause included in that?
No.
There's a financial error? Thank you.
Sure. And this is not final news. When we receive that, we'll share. Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the financial report as presented? Item number four, superintendent's report.
On to the superintendent's report. We have a wonderful report today, you're gonna be quite impressed. Uh, we have a good number of our students here. We have a surprise group that's not in here yet, and we're gonna save them till the very end. So, uh, we're gonna begin today with our, um, Y Club. Uh, we have with us today, uh, we have Tommy Hayes, uh, Ms. Morgan Dalton, and Mr. Kenny Hardeman. Anyone else sponsor flies?
Just us.
The three of you, and, uh, who's gonna present today? Hang on, hang on one second.
I'm gonna present, Brooke Harden.
Okay, all right, good, yeah. That'd be great. But, uh, we did wanna say, uh, they go to K-Y-A every year, the Kentucky Youth Assembly. This is a three-day, uh, event where they model state government, and there were a lot of great things that happened this year, from what I understand. I think we had forty-one of our students participate in, and it was the largest K-Y-A ever, uh, for the state, from what I understand. So, it was a, a significant year, and, uh, I'll stop at that point, and we're going to, uh, let Mr. Hayes introduce, and then we'll go from there, and hopefully, we're gonna learn what all you accomplished this year.
You will. Uh, we have Grace Manley, Brooke Harden, Ethan, Sabrina, Jack.
Well, we have them stand, so we can see who they are here.
Sure.
See, Jack and, okay, start again, or something we can do.
And, um...
Victoria and Josh as well.
Victoria and Josh as well. So, we're gonna have Brooke Harden though, address the board on what awards we did win for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The mission of the Kentucky YMCA Youth Association is to develop engaged citizens and servant leaders, inspired to effect change in their school, community, Commonwealth nation, and world. Through experiential learning, service, and community activism, the Kentucky YMCA Youth Association fosters critical thinking, leadership, and social responsibility in teens. The Kentucky Youth Assembly is a three-day experiential learning program in which students serve as a part, students serve as part of a model state government. K-Y-A offers students the opportunity to learn about a wide variety of issues, develop critical thinking skills, and articulate their beliefs while engaging constructively with their peers from around the Commonwealth. There are two levels of our House and Senate split up into Bluegrass, freshmen and sophomores, and Commonwealth, which includes juniors and seniors. Delegates research, write, and debate bills on state policy issues. The number of bills delegation can sponsor depends on how many delegates they have attended K-Y-A. We have one Bluegrass bill this year and one Commonwealth bill. We have four sponsors for our Bluegrass bill, and here representing them is Ethan Hall, a freshman, who's wanting to tell you about the bill.
I'm Ethan Hall, and, uh, we, at K-Y-A, we, um, passed a bill, uh, that passed all three stages, um, uh, Senate, House, and, uh, the governor, of course. And, uh, it was the Act of Legalizing Medicinal Marijuana. And, uh, in that bill, we, uh, talked about a young girl named, uh, Charlotte Piggy, and she was diagnosed with Dravish Syndrome. And, um, she was able to get the help she needed through medicinal marijuana, which is, uh, not legalized in the state. And, uh, we figured it'd be a good, um, good purpose to talk about in our bill, and it passed, so.
Uh, after, or actually, Jeff Downs, um, who was a sponsor for the Commonwealth bill, we actually had three of them, and they're all three with us. Um, he's gonna describe their bill and the legislative process at K-Y-A.
He's gonna get the big sweater award.
Yeah, we had a Christmas sweater for Christmas at the high school day, just to go.
Um, my name is Jeff Downs, and my fellow sponsors are Sabrina Johnson and Victoria Harris back there. Um, our bill this year was to support financial education in schools. We saw that the student debt crisis in Kentucky was pretty severe, and wanted to make a bill that would help solve that. So, uh, the Commonwealth group got all the way through the House and the Senate, and then our bill was vetoed at the governor. And what made our experience unique was that we had to go give a veto address. So, basically, what I had to do was go up and talk in front of the entire K-Y-A, uh, organization, which was about sixteen hundred kids, and I had to try to reveal his veto. And we got very, very close, but it did not ultimately pass. But for me, this is my first K-Y-A, and be with such a good group of fellow sponsors, and just to be with all the K-Y-A kids was so great. So, I'm glad we could positively represent both.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so our legislative program was amazing this year, and we're so proud of them. Um, there are also other programs, such as Media Corps, the Judicial Program, and the Lawless Program. Media delegates craft compelling news stories on important assembly topics, and Media Corps members publish their stories on our app, web blog, and video platforms. Supreme Court delegates serve as attorneys presenting oral arguments before the K-Y-A Supreme Court, made up of student justices, and we also advise the Attorney General on the constitutionality of bills passed by the Commonwealth House and Senate. Evan Newsom and I had the pleasure of representing our school in this program this year, even with the sticky circumstances we were put in. The first day, we finished preparing our oral arguments, and the next day, we went through three rounds of oral arguments. The case we were arguing was if the state of Kentucky had infringed upon a person's Fourth Amendment rights when the defendant was searched for drugs. Um, unfortunately, I got sick the second morning, so Evan had to do our first two rounds by himself, and he did amazing. He ended up winning most outstanding attorney for the conference, won his showcase round on the third morning, and together, we won most outstanding attorney team for the conference. It was such a fun program, and I'm so glad I got to participate in it. Therefore, our club is very thankful that we are able to attend this conference and our other one in March due to the support of our school system. We received awards as a club, including delegation of excellence, excellence, which means every person in our delegation voted at the conference. We also received the Chapter of Distinction Award, which means that we have logged over a thousand service hours as a club this year. Josh Hutchinson won the most outstanding delegate award for our delegation, and Grace Manley was given the most outstanding speaker award. It was overall a successful and joyful experience for all of us.
I did wanna add that this group, uh, today is representing their, their high school and even their sponsors, uh, and coaches. Uh, today is, uh, Spirit Day at school, so we've got a dual, we've got Christmas spirit and school spirit mixed together here, so. There you go. So, great job. I'll tell you one of the most rewarding things, um, in this job as superintendent is you get to see folks like Brooke and others out there, and you remember them back, uh, in the very early grades, and just sort of watch them work through, and then you see them up here today, uh, representing us so well. It's just, uh, words can't describe how rewarding that is. So, keep up the great work, and thank you for representing us well. So, uh, our next, uh, uh, program here, I want to introduce to you, back in May of this past year, uh, I shared with you that we were gonna start a robotics program here, uh, in our school system. At that point, we were in the very early stages. Uh, we were beginning to plan and put some things together, and, uh, our, our goal was to, to have a, uh, program that, uh, would, a theater system that would build on itself. And we wanted to begin with, uh, all the way down into, uh, our STEAM Academy with our fourth grade students who were, uh, who are focusing on, uh, robotic technology through, uh, the Finch and Ozbots. Then our fifth and our sixth graders, uh, in the, uh, STEAM, uh, program would be focusing on, uh, the Rokenbot, uh, and, and the Lego Mindstorm. Our seventh grade, uh, are currently working on the VEX IQ, uh, robot systems. Each one of these gets a little more complicated, a little more difficult, continuing to challenge the, the student. The idea is to get some interest at an early grade. And then we go to the VEX program, which is at the high school level. And, uh, we're gonna learn just a little bit more about that, uh, here in just a few minutes. But, uh, this program, they started from nothing this year, and hopefully, we're gonna show you some, uh, some great progress that they have made, uh, in the program, uh, building towards, uh, what we're after, and that's to, to win a, a national competition somewhere. So, uh, one of the, uh, great things that we were able to, uh, receive from adding this program is that in our high school, we were able to, to include a pathway for manufacturing, uh, to our curriculum. Now, I mentioned this to you before, and I'll tell you again, but according to Marty Sutherland at ECTC, he's the robotic instructor there. There are, in the, in the summer of two thousand seventeen, there were twenty jobs, uh, in robotics available that this region was unable to fill, uh, with local people. That's a hundred and six thousand dollars a year beginning salary. That's what pushed us, uh, into this direction, uh, is that there is a need, uh, for, for this area. Uh, we applied for a grant, we were very fortunate to receive that grant. Uh, we also had some other monies that you made available, uh, for this group. And so, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hunt to come at this time, uh, if you will, and, uh, share with us, uh, some things that we have going on in the high school. Now, what you see today, this is our varsity group, if you will. Remember, we're, we're working towards this. All of our, uh, students in the earlier grades that have an interest in robotics will someday be here, uh, in, in our varsity team. Mr. Hunt?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hall's call, and then thank you, board members, for, for allowing us some time to speak with you today. Now, I am Mr. Hunt, I'm the engineering technology teacher at the high school, um, and we thought of our VEX program this year. Um, and the VEX program is, it's, it's an educational robotics platform that we have been able to integrate in both a competitive and a classroom nature. So, we, we teach a class that teaches components of robotics, and it allows us to dig very deeply into content for robotics. Um, we can discuss problem solving very heavy, and problem solving very heavy, and troubleshooting. Um, we have mechanical systems, structural systems, electrical systems. Uh, there's even programming and coding we will continue to refine. Um, there's a lot of planning, a lot of notebooking, uh, design notebooking, documentations. Um, but the students can learn the skill and then apply the skill to our VEX competitive team as well. Um, so today, I, I have some members that you'll see in just a minute, are both members of the class and/or the team, so we're representing both here today. Um, if Mr. Beck would, would start a video, we've got just a slideshow for you, so you can see some of our planning and the way some of our tasks carry out. You'll see what the robotics platform does. Um, but with the VEX EDR, the Educational Robotics System, you have mechanical systems that work with, with metal structures, aluminum metal structures. They're driven by motors and servos and sensors that the kids can apply gear sets and trains and sprockets to, all in, in essence, to some game. There, there's some type of game, and this year, the, the game, it is called In the Zone. Um, and it's a series of basically cone stacking, which the robot must pick up a cone, put it on a base, and move it to a certain score zone. And each cone stacked and placed in the score zone is worth a different point value. Um, ideally, the higher you can stack cones, the better off you are, and move them through. So, if you wanna start with the VEX. Yeah, the video go. But it's quite a neat system, there's several, several different components that are allowable to use from VEX, but they all must be VEX components. Um, there's a great deal of, of sketching and hands, hand drawing, along with some CAD-based drawing that can take place. Um, one thing that is pretty unique with it, the, the team that they're built, they can delineate roles to one another. So, you have one student may be an operator, and one student may be a designer, and one student may be a builder, but then that, they all work together cohesively, just like they would on a true engineering project if they were working in, in a robotics field or a manufacturing field. It, it's not just a student by himself sitting down tinkering with components. It's, they, they must work interactively, like move one another. So, while they set this up, gentlemen, if you wanna grab a few pieces, and set up here, we have a, but it's a small demonstration that these gentlemen will go through, that you can see the outline of the build process here, and these are final to date, but they're not finished products. So, this, this is, uh, something that will continue to grow and be built upon. You don't have to set them all up all.
I'm so glad we get to see them, you know?
We were very fortunate to have the opportunity to bring them over.
Yeah.
And again, these robots are both competitive and/or class bots. They're, um, they're not necessarily one or the other, well, sorry. Some of them are, are designated just classroom built, and some of them are extracurricular, just the competition team, so we have brought both today.
While we're getting ready here, tell us about that field.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm gonna have to do that. Now, our VEX competition field we have set up, uh, right now, i- is a twelve-by-twelve field. Um, and within that field, there are four mobile bases, which are the red and blue bases you see here. There's up to about seventy-five cones that are dispersed on the field and also off the field, uh, that the robots can be handed. Uh, there's a couple of different pylons that can be stacked upon as well. Um, and it's, it's pretty, pretty remarkable, pretty remarkable sight. At, during a true competition, there would be four robots on, on the field at, at any given time, and they have two minutes to, to stack and move as many cones and score as many points as they can. And, and you can see some of the early stages of us working with them here. The integration of, of the mechanical system with the electrical system and, and control is, this is, it's pretty, it's become pretty difficult at times. But a, a lot of it is just practicing operators. Uh, one of our primary operators for one of the robots was not able to be here today, so we've got a backup going, so we'll, we don't wanna put any pressure on you, Dallas, but...
All right, so these are controlled wireless?
Yes, yes, these are USB-controlled, so it's all wireless signals, so.
You all don't have any experience with Xbox or anything, do you?
Uh-uh.
Nothing like that, no, okay, all right.
All right, gentlemen, you wanna give them an idea of what they can do?
And in competitions, do you just have one on the course at a time?
Actually, they run up to four on the course.
It's a four at the same time.
There, there's a time crunch and a competition there, so you gotta get more than, than the opposing team or the opposing alliance.
So, like this one is gathering, you know, could be stacking.
Yeah, at, at this point, this one's gathering, and this bot, the design for it is, there is much more to go on. He will have an arm similar to the one you see on the bottom of the helmin, um, but at this point, yeah, he, he can gather for, for, for his alliance member and stack. And this one also has a, he is designed to where he is, he can move and push that mobile base to a particular point. And one thing is, the carpet here may, may throw off capabilities a little bit, because they're on a, a phone, a tie.
And different teams, I guess, could get in the way of each other.
Yes, they can.
Yeah.
Completely from scratch.
Ah.
Um, a- as you see anything on there that's shiny and metal, with just a piece of, of shiny metal, aluminum, that was, it, it comes in just standard hot form or cold grilled steel or aluminum, so it's C channels and, and angle brackets, motors, wires, but in terms of anything being preassembled, the way it is, the only, the only part of any of these boxes is preassembled the way you see it now, is the claw mechanism. The claw mechanism is, is preassembled just the end jaws where they clamp the motor that drives it.
There's no blowtorch or buzzsaw or?
We, we cut some, some parts on the bandsaw. We do cut some, some of those parts on the bandsaw, but...
Very good. Are you guys looking forward to competition?
Yes, sir.
Where is the competition this year?
Uh, the VEX World is, is held in local this year. Um, our regional conference, well, our regional competition is held in March, I believe it's the first weekend in March, and it will be, I believe, in Shelby County.
Okay, is VEX a brand name or?
VEX is a brand name. Um, the VEX components are, are the ones we use, and they are the manufacturer, the supplier. Um, the Robotics Education and, the Robotic Education and Competition Foundation, REC, as they're known, actually submits the game, and they are, are, they're a, a nonprofit group that is sponsored by NASA and Northrop Grumman and several others, um, that, that develop curriculum and testing for robotic systems. Um, and they, they decide the game every year and, and release that to correspond with, with the VEX components.
Thanks. Good work, congratulations. Great job, great job. As, uh, we're getting our VEX, uh, look at your, on the ball for the next hour. Um, recently, on December the ninth, uh, two thousand seventeen, uh, we were well represented, uh, by our Chair of the Board of Education, Mr. Dan Groby, uh, who was the speaker, the keynote speaker, uh, at the Second Annual Bourbon and Bluegrass Bash that supports the Plagehead Memorial Hospital. Uh, Mr. Groby brought the house down with an emotional and inspirational speech. Uh, they, they, they made, I'm not sure what the goal was, but they exceeded the goal quite a bit by ninety, nearly ninety thousand dollars. That money's gonna go into, uh, a, a new, uh, part of a cancer center, it's just one of the fundraisers that we do, so. They're doing great work out there, and Mr. Groby, thank you for representing yourself very well, and thank you for representing the Barstown City School System. Thank you. So, uh, um, with that being said, we're waiting on our next group to come on in. And so, uh, we have a very special Christmas gift for you, uh, from the Stacy Hinkaby and kindergarten rappers. You are gonna be, uh, very pleased with, with the wonderful performance here, so.
Brad, you can tell Sam, yeah, I apologize, 'cause I was getting a brief this morning, uh, I said, "Man, great, thank you, officer."
I'm a Christmas parent. Thank you. See, I do that, you know, man. I'll make a phone call. Hey, we're going to be melting this evening presenting for the Y Club. Someone here, I promise you.
Okay, we are actually the Hip Hop Elves, is what we like to call ourselves. So thank you, guys, for letting us perform today.
Where's Roman?
I'm here.
Big circus theme?
You might think that elves are good and make me much is true. They're really good at elfish things, but that's not all they do. They move, they groove, they love a hip hop beat. They just can't help it, when it starts, it goes right to their feet. They like to dance, all through their y-y ears. They put some pointy points onto their y-y ears. They like to move, 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 out in the snow, oh-oh. They put some pointy points onto their t-t, oh-oh, oh-oh. You might think that elves are good and making lots of toys. They work and work to make them nice for all the girls and boys. But wait, there's more. They love a hip hop beat. They just can't help it, when it starts, it goes right to their feet. They like to dance, all through their y-y ears. They put some pointy points onto their y-y ears. They like to move, 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 out in the snow, oh-oh. They put some pointy points onto their t-t, oh-oh. They like to dance, all through their y-y ears. They put some pointy points onto their y-y ears. They like to move, 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 out in the snow, oh-oh. They put some pointy points onto their t-t, oh-oh, oh-oh.
And our little elves, thank you, our little elves have something they'd like to give you guys today for letting us perform.
Merry Christmas to you. Thank you so much. You all were just great, I knew you would be. Good job, good job.
You could raise your hand if you did not get candy cane. Our little elves mentally, our little elves need, now they need candy cane. Audience members, raise your hands, we need to give out some candy cane. Put them over there, they need one. If you're some back here that needs some candy cane, let's.
Miss Stacy, will we get that on iTunes?
Uh, sure. I think so. Thank you, guys. All right, little hip hop elves, let's go.
I see how it is, though.
No, today's.
Yeah, either, yeah.
Yesterday, we've done this.
Makes us all happy.
Since your first rode.
That's right, that's right. So I do hope that you enjoyed that. I will say, we're going to see if we have any visitors here in just a moment, but next up would be Michelle Ryan, and I'd hate to be Michelle after five to follow this. So, sorry about this, Michelle, I apologize upfront. So let's see if we have any visitors here before.
Are there any visitors that would like to address the board at this time? Very good, moving on. Focus on item number six, focus on delivery targets, Barstown Primary.
Just to remind you, this is a series of events where we have our principals come and share with us on things that they are working on in their school. They may share with us some things they've accomplished. Of course, the primary school is a non-accountability area, at least on what the state gives us. Fortunately, our primary school takes serious the elementary accountability and works very hard to prepare these students when they walk into the door. You look at the results from recent K-Prep, they're doing a remarkable job. So, Ms. Ryan, it's all yours, looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you so much. And let me say, as Mr. Host Paul shared earlier, seeing that the high school students are performing, it is just so heartwarming to think that it hasn't been that long since they were here with us, and it's so great to see their success. And it's hard for me to follow award-winning lawyers and engineers and future singers. So last year, when I talked to you about our focus on learning targets, we, I've talked to you about some different things we were doing in our school. One of the areas that I focused on a lot with you was our skills groups and our PLCs. This year, I want to do the same thing, I want to continue that. And I'm just going to take a few minutes to talk specifically about this one area, this one thing that we're addressing in our schools. Just a reminder, our skills groups are groups of students that are placed together flexibly, which means that kids can move in and out of the groups as needed. We use the MAC test, as Mr. Host Paul showed with you. We don't have state mandated testing at our grades, at our grades. So we use the MAC test, and we have, the last couple of years, there have been some new reports added to the MAC test that allows us to break the test day on the math and the reading components or scores into specific skills. So we're able to identify the skills that students are deficit in, their lowest skills. Even if they're high-performing students, they have a lowest skill area. So we, as a staff and administrators, we come together and determine what that area is, and how do we need to design our RTI, our intervention practices, to fill those gaps. We start looking just at the basics. We look at, for math, we're looking at numbers and operations, the first things that kids need to master. In reading, we're looking at foundational skills, again, the base. So we work on getting that solid base of skills, then we move kids up. So we do meet monthly to review success and the growth that we've seen with kids and to make group adjustments. We may move students from one group to the other if they show mastery of whatever skill they were placed with, and to plan activities. So when we're meeting in those RTI skills groups, it's not lecture, it's not sit and get. Our kids are active, they're hands-on, they're using manipulatives, they're doing small group reading, a small group reading. They are doing things specifically intended to be hands-on, minds-on. Last year, we really focused on math. We were very fortunate to have a grant where we had a math intervention teacher. So we saw great success with math last year, and I'm going to share that success with you from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year by using that model of focusing on the skills. This is first grade, what you're looking at are first grade math scores, looking specifically at numbers and operations. At the beginning of the year, we began with, the blue column is fall scores. Red column are winter scores, and the yellow column is our spring scores. The first set of numbers, this first set, are students that are considerably below average, below, they're at the 21st percentile and below. These are low-average students, these are average, high-average, and considerably above. So after the additional 30 minutes instruction a day in reading, I'm sorry, in math, you can see we went from majority of our kids being below average on numbers and operations to 76% of our kids being in the high average, not even average, in the considerably above average. So we, huge, huge growth with this area in first grade. So even though this is looking specifically at that one component, we saw those math scores grow across the board in math for all areas, because the foundation, that numbers and operations, is preparing the other areas of math growth also. Some are situation with second grade math. You see, we started off with a lot of kids below over here in the blue column, and we ended up shifting a lot of kids to that average and above average with that very intentional focus on numbers and operations. So with this focus on numbers and operations, we need to, we need to sit back and kind of reset ourselves and think, so what's it going to look like for this year? You know, we know that we saw all that growth by focusing on those skills. We're using that model this year to not only address math that way, which we're continuing, we're doing reading the same way. So we're making those reading groups based on the skills that students show needs. In kindergarten, this looks a little bit different. We are grouping within the classroom to fill in the basics, which for kindergarten, you're talking number and letter, naming and sound identification and writing. So it's the bare basics. And first grade, that's where we begin the flexible grouping. So we have teacher teams, there's one team of five teachers, one of four, and they're working on numbers and operations like we did last year in, for the math intervention. We are down, as of our winter test that we finished this past week, we only had 40 students that are not in the average range or above. So we're all raising in great growth this year. So in numbers and operations, only 40 students still need to make that jump. In foundational skills, in reading, we're seeing the same thing. Again, this is the first time that we really specifically address those skills in reading, but we only have 54 students in first grade that need to make that jump to average or above from the intervention that we've already had in place. Second grade gets a little bit more complicated, but it's still the same flexible grouping. They're still working on numbers and operations, but we only have 14 students this year. And I can, I really attribute this to the first grade attention to this last year. Only 14 students not in the average range. So we identified those 14 students, they're receiving that very specific skill instruction to move them so that by the end of spring, all of our students are going to be above average in that basic operation. We also then started looking, so we only have 14 students that need that, so what's the next area was operations and algebraic thinking. 25 students of all that we have that need to make the jump to average there. So those 25 students are getting that specific instruction to fill in the gaps for numbers and operations. I'm sorry, operations and algebraic thinking. We have some kids that are already working on geometry and measurement and data, which are not second grade math standards, but they show pretty good mastery of the basics, so we're taking them to the next level. So our RTI is not just intervention, it's also proving to be an enrichment time also. We're doing the same thing for reading and foundational skills. We only have 31 students there that are not on, that are not at grade level or not, I'm sorry, at average in reading foundational skills, and vocabulary, using functions is the next thing that we're going to target there. So our next steps, we're going to continue to refine this process. We really feel that it works well. It's looking at skills that support the standards, not the standards as a blanket, but dissecting the standards and looking at the skills. We're going to continue to refine that in our PLC process of how we work together, how we determine what that data is, how we divide, how we determine the activities that are going to challenge our students the best to give them to fill in those gaps. We also are going to utilize an effect size measure to help us make sure that we are reducing the gap. Those 14 kids, those 25 kids that are behind, we're going to make sure that we are growing them fast enough to catch them up. So we've had great success so far, I'm really excited to look at this at the end of the year, and we're going to continue to develop our reading and writing procedures. We thought we really, really pushed, pushed, pushed math for the last couple of years, now we're ready to push, push, push reading and keep both of those pushes going for our students and keep them just academically on top and where they should be to prepare them to be the future engineers and the future award-winning lawyers. Any questions or comments?
Do you find any common barriers with the children who are lagging behind?
We have found some common barriers. In one group, in our second grade, we have seen a large portion of the, you know, of the reading kids that haven't made that average mark yet. We have seen that we have a significant group of Hispanic females. So we have targeted them, we're pulling out kids, we have another group, we have, they're working with Ms. Marcy, with our librarian, doing some book clubs and doing some other activities to get them more involved in reading, that we really think is going to make a big difference for them. And I think a lot of it is just vocabulary development for them and language exposure. But we have identified, we've seen that as a concern, and we're putting some things into place to try to help address that beyond the RTI time and beyond the typical instruction that every other student gets.
Have you done any correlation between the students in the kindergarten first and second grade with those students that came from our early childhood?
We see that correlation, I have not followed them through all the way, but that would be something very interesting to do. Where I do see a connection is when we do the Brigance Test every, at the beginning of every year for kindergarten, and I don't know if Michelle, if Ms. Sharp speaks about this, so the Brigance Test, every kindergartner has to be tested for kindergarten readiness at the beginning of kindergarten year. So whether they're ready or not, they're there, we just have to determine their level of readiness. What we have seen from that is the students who attend our Early Childhood Program are hands-down several percentage points above the average of students who do not attend.
Seventy-one versus 49, the state average.
So 71% come kindergarten-ready versus the state average is 49. And when we compare to local, to, when we look at our students that came to us, not even states, where those other students are below the state average, so that gap is even larger. Our Early Childhood is really doing a fantastic job preparing kids for us.
Okay, two questions, please. What baseline do you use for the average?
It's a national average that is determined by MAC. I think it's.
Even though they're not tested for, but you got the.
It's just for that test, it's for the NWEA test, it's the MAC, it's the Measures of Academic Progress. So NWEA has normed that test, it has national norms.
At that age, yeah.
And for that age, yes.
The second question is, how many of these children do you find that may be deficient in vocabulary and math and overlap? You've got 14 of this one, you've got 25 of that, and you've got 40 of that. Do you have 12 that are consistently across the board?
Yeah, it's almost, it's at least 90% of the same kids.
Okay, so now we've got.
Those that aren't, that's a flag for us to know maybe there's a learning disability there.
Well, my point being, I guess, you've got 14 here, that's the same 14 here, it's not 25.
Right.
And it's not 40.
Right.
You've got this number that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's, that's bad, doesn't.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you all so much, all your support.
Thanks.
The next item is approval of school year calendar, 18, 19.
No, I think there's seven, seven.
What data?
All the comprehensive, I think it's just calendar, excuse me. Now, we're at the Comprehensive District Improvement Plan, and we will remind you, when you see this title, you immediately think, if you're a district improvement plan, well, you must, you must need to improve somewhere, or you wouldn't be on the plan. I'd just like to clear that point up. The way this works is that every school district in the state of Kentucky will have an improvement plan, and if you're, a good way to put it, if you're a perfect 10, I will remind you, we are an distinguished school district. The last time they gave us our score, so if we're a 10, we need to make, take ourselves off the chart. So that's what Tim's going to present to you today, is going to speak to you about our plan to continue the improvement that we're making here within our schools.
Yes, this is the beginning of the plan that we bring to you every year in December. It's a living document that we've actually started work on at the beginning of the school year on our first school day, and we'll continue to work on throughout the year, and we'll make changes to it throughout the year. But we bring it to you every December so that we can get the initial approval from you. But before we go into that, I do want to. But before we go into that, I do want to remind you that, as Mr. Ospal said, we were a distinguished district two years ago when they had the overall calculation. Those calculations will end, and the state is now going in a different direction, and we will never again, or at least for the foreseeable future, see a single rating of a single word, be it a distinguished district or a seventy-nine point nine percent, we'll never have any single indicator. We're going to be looking at a dashboard system, we, we've shown you this before, the, the mock-up of the dashboard system. And the reason I wanted to show you that is because you'll notice that the comprehensive improvement plan that we have before you in the file called Goal Builder, that will mirror the items that you see here. So for each one of these, whether it's transition readiness, or proficiency, or growth, or achievement gap closure, we have goals that we've set for the district and for each of the schools and for all of our students. And then at the end, the activities will intertwine between all of these goals, so at the end, we'll discuss the activities. So if there's no questions about the dashboard, we'll move on to the first component of this is, we were on the assist platform in the previous five years, the state of Kentucky has now moved us to the E-Proof system. You might recognize that we use the E-Proof workplace, went through the accreditation process. We're now working in E-Proof diagnostics, so everything we do will be in the E-Proof system. That's just a procedural move that the state has had first this year. There are five required goals that everyone seated must include. We can't have additional goals, but we are required by the state to have those goals. Some of the goals are set for us by the state, some of them are set by ourselves and the indicators that we choose. And here's the five required categories, there are proficiency, graduation, growth, gap, and transition readiness. You notice the indicators, the last three have asterisks because the last three have changed over what we've been used to. As far as proficiency and graduation, it's the same thing you've looked at over the last decade, we will continue to write goals and have activities for those. The first one, proficiency, currently is combined reading and math. There are four levels that each student will attain when they take the KPREB test, they will either be novice, apprentice, proficient, or distinguished. And the state and locally, we try to push all students to at least proficiency and beyond. So the way we get these goals, we take a look at all of our students that are proficient or distinguished in both reading and math, combine those two goals together. The change we will have in the future will be, under the new system, they want to move science and social studies as indicators too, so we'll be looking at all four of those components put together and our general numbers we have for proficiency. Right now, our reading scores exceed our math scores, and this is the one we're really focused again on for proficiency overall for the students. And you see, here we have our goal and our objective, and it's based upon baseline data we have for this year and a goal from 2030. I will go through and read each one of these, but each school has a different number based upon where they are, where we need them to be. You'll notice the VPS is on here also. We've got proficiency goals, we have all five of the indicators where we've been able to mathematically link them to the NWEA test that Michelle spoke to you of, so that all of our schools can have the same goal and begin to have that vertical climbing process. Any questions about proficiency? Okay, we'll keep on moving. Graduation is very clear-cut, it's going to be a four-year cohort, those are the students that should have graduated in a four-year period with VCS. Our goal is going to be at ninety-five point two percent, that's really only a tenth of a point greater than where we are now, we're at ninety-five point one, but that'll put us on track to maintain our level of distinction.
Tim, we're currently measuring the same way?
Yes, yes, and we will continue to. Yes, sir.
On the dashboard chart, it had different numbers for the graduation rate, was that just a mock-up or was that, was that the actual?
Yes, that's a good question. This is a mock-up that the state has put out. There was, there was a little concern because they have a three-star, well, if we put that on our history, it's going to look like that size, so, yes, that was exactly our concern. But this is just a mock-up of generic numbers. Growth, growth is the students' growth towards proficiency. This is going to be one that we will see some general increase in. Traditionally, what you saw with growth, at all districts across the state, was data that looked like this. And the reason that was is because when students achieved their growth goal under the previous system, it reset them to a different goal. So every time students achieved one level, it raised the bar for them, and then they underachieved the next level. The sports analogy we always like to use is if you, if you bat three hundred in the minors, they immediately put you in the majors, and then you tend to bat a little less, so they put you back in the minors, and then you bat a little more. So we didn't see this nice longitudinal data that we like to see in using data to be able to help students. What we saw was something that was a very good effort and a good first attempt to try to measure growth in students, but it was a fundamentally flawed system. The state recognized this, and they're setting up a new growth system where each individual student will have baseline data this year, and then each individual student will be given a growth trajectory to get them to proficiency or beyond, if they're already beyond proficiency. So we'll be able to measure each individual student. We're not a hundred percent sure what that's going to look like yet, but we know that's what we're going to see in the spring, KPREB data. Any questions on growth? Okay, we'll keep moving. Gap, this is probably the largest change that we're going to see in our new system. Gap is now going to be measured by every single student group that there is. We used to have a single gap goal, and you can see now that we have gap goals for every single student population that we have. If there's student populations that we don't have a goal for, that's because it, it does not, that district, or excuse me, that school does not have ten or more students of that gap population. We can't write a goal unless we have ten or more students per grade level, or they represent ten percent of our population. And the only one that that really changes is our Hispanic students. At VHS, we do not have a Hispanic goal for VHS, but you can see, we do have an individual goal for each of those students, and those goals represent our effort to close the achievement gap between each of the groups.
How are they identified then? Where are they categorized if you go have a Hispanic gap?
They won't, they won't be categorized, they won't be pulled out and included as part of the gap population if they're less than ten, but they will still be included in the total population.
So effectively, you could have nothing but one total, if we have less than ten percent of any types of this, it's all grouped into one.
Correct, if you were, if you were a system that wasn't as diversified as ours are, they, they could have just a few in each of the categories and not enough to actually create an indicator for.
So how, how does that affect this whole gap system?
It will make gap goals for systems of a great deal of diversity such as ours, much more complex. It'll be a much simpler system in areas such as...
So when we try to reach these goals, we may have detractors in that particular category based on the non-population, a ten percent that may pull the number down or may raise the number up?
Unless we have one of the ten percent of the population, they won't count that towards our goal.
But they'll be included in the category.
They will be included in all of them, yes.
Which may raise it to more.
Right. And when, even if we don't have ten percent of the population, if we have any of them, we write internal goals because...
That won't be, that won't be established.
It won't be represented, and, and we won't submit it to the state, and the state won't publish those findings, but we track those internally, because even if we only have five kids, those are five kids that we have to pay attention to.
Right, same then, just there. Thank you.
Don't these overlap?
Yes, ma'am. Well, excuse me, none of the individual groups overlap. If they're students with disability, they will only be counted in the students with disabilities group. All of these do not overlap. The only one that we don't have a goal for because we don't have the data for yet is students of two or more races, which represents, represents a sizable portion of our student population. And the state just has not calculated the data for that, so we don't have a mechanism for monitoring that yet.
So you have to pick a category?
No, they will be put in the category which they fell into under proficiency, which is just the general population. They will not have, they won't exist in a gap category.
So you don't have economically disadvantaged Hispanic or African-American?
No, they, that would be a subcategory of a subcategory.
I like where she's going with that, because we have, we have mixed children, then if, if they choose to be white or black or Hispanic or mixed Chinese...
Right.
Where, where does that fall within?
That, that is a good question, and that's one that the parents determine, and it goes by whatever, regardless of what the child may appear, or what the child may live culturally, that goes by what they've selected on Infinite Campus. So on Infinite Campus, if they selected African-American, that's the category they'll go in. If they've selected two or more races, next year, when that category exists, that's where they'll go in.
Would you say the state has not identified? Anything right now?
The state has not tracked in the past. They identify, but they've just not tracked the data, and they will begin doing that with this new set of test results that we see in the future. But that, that's a very good question, and that's one we've had to really remind our teachers that we can't go just based upon what folks look like, we have to actually look at the data, what do they identify as, and that's most important.
But I was thinking that a student may fall in several categories.
Oh, and many of them do, many of them do.
Yeah.
But for purposes of gap, we only have one category that identifies all economically disadvantaged, that's free and reduced lunch, regardless of their racial makeup. Same thing with students with disabilities.
How does that really, I, I'm not sure, I'm at the quadrant same she is, I don't know how, that, so we have economically disadvantaged children free and reduced lunch.
Correct.
Which is what, fifty-six percent or something of our students overlap?
Like seventy.
Seventy?
Higher than fifty, at least sixty.
So you eliminate all these other categories, they all go into one? That, that, I didn't get that, did you?
No.
No, are we on the same page? Yeah. My question is, is I think, if they're all economically disadvantaged, and all the rest of these categories don't matter, what, your, your black, white, makes doesn't matter? If you're economically disadvantaged, say, the percentage of the population goes one, is that correct?
No, no, they will all, they will be a part of this right here, but they will also be a part of, they, they could be special education, they could be African-American, they could be, and they will be included in each one, but they will have one total for themselves. So yes, you can be in any one of these indicators.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's not true, you, you can only be in one race.
Well...
You, you can't be African-American.
This is where we're getting along.
So yes, but as far as the racial makeup, you can be one of those, and then you can also be special ed, and you can also be...
Well, I guess where we were going a little bit, how do you, how do you start to divide those children into X?
Right.
Even though they may be Y and Z?
And, and part of what we've done as a school system is, and Mrs. Ryan spoke to using effect size to manage gap students, what we've done is, we find it most beneficial to find out who our gap students are, regardless of the reason they're up here.
Right.
We've identified them as gap students and non-gap students.
And we still, when she was, when I, the question answered previously, was it, you said ones that don't read well, ones that are good at math, one are, you know, algebraic and then, they end up, it's not just twelve, it's not just forty, it's not fifty, it's the same twelve are in each category.
Right.
And we get a, we get overlap, and I guess, I think Kathy asked the first question about overlap, and we just have a, a conglomeration, I guess, of everybody's category.
As gap.
Or, or even here.
Any other questions?
I confused myself in that. No, thank you, yeah.
So these are our gap goals for each of our student population. Transition readiness, this is what you previously knew as college and career readiness. It will now be called transition readiness. We'll still measure it the same way fundamentally at the high school level, at the elementary and middle school, it will only be measured at the end of their transition years. That's fifth grade at the elementary, eighth grade at the middle school. We will also create a transition readiness for the primary, which will mean their second grade year as they transition on to our elementary. And then our activities that we've already began to use is, and this goes back to, we talked about with our advanced ed accreditation, data literacy and assessment, and having a data plan for the staff to ensure that they understood data, had a great deal of data literacy, was a component that we began to work on as soon as our advanced ed accreditation was over. We began working with staff on the goal days, we created our own data literacy plan for the district, so that we begin to take a look at the different forms of data, how to utilize data, how to monitor data, how to collect it, and most importantly, how to read it. You can collect all the data in the world, but if you're not reading it, you can't understand what it means, it's hard to make changes in, in your administration. We are also looking at district, working with consultant Ainsley Rhodes for tracking those gap students, and that was our effect size plan that we came up with with Mr. Ainsley Rhodes, which we've already developed and we're utilizing in all the schools, from the high school all the way down. We're going to refine and continue to work on our focus groups in special education and with our gap students. This will be our fourth year working with those. That was another change that Michelle talked about when she was up here. We're also looking at our evaluation of our intervention plans, in particular at the middle school, and we've piloted a couple of different programs, rather than using a single program for a single year to see if it worked, we've had different pilot areas out to try to find the most effective use of our dollars and with our teachers' work. And deeper analysis with math data, we've now begun a process where we're looking at not just the RIT band skills, but we're looking at the actual national percentiles, are our students moving percentile-wise? And so these, these are the core of the major activities that are part of our district improvement plan for this year to this point. We will reevaluate that come January and look and see if we need to add anything new, or we've closed out anything that we've really done a good job on already. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
You have with you the Goal Builder Plan document, which is the one that we will be submitting to the state, these are the highlights of that, so. No more questions?
Greg, thank you for explaining a very complicated process, especially being a little bit new, and doing things a little different, so we'll get to hanging over here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Need your approval of that one, I do believe.
Okay, I'm Devin, do I hear a motion to approve the Comprehensive District Improvement Plan?
Second.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say, about saying no? Oh, go ahead, no. Item eight, approval two thousand and eighteen WHAS Crusade Children's Grant.
Yes, if you'll notice in your packet, you'll have a copy, a copy of that WHAS application. Secondly, if you'll go ahead and swipe on back to the last three pages in that particular section, you'll see a, a bid from a company that we have used in the past for playground equipment, we used for the elementary recently, and also at the primary school, and you'll see a bid there of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And then the last two pages are possible layouts of those particular pieces of playground equipment, hopefully you'll be able to see those as well. The location of this will be at the end of the Tiger Den, there is a playground located there currently. What this would do would allow children with special needs not only to have the current playground, and the one down the hill at the elementary is also friendly to special needs, but this one is, is designed primarily for those special needs children as well as other children. You know that we have our, our little steamers over on this end of the Tiger Den, that could also become a playground area for them if we're able to continue this afternoon program as we have this year with the grant that we're applying for. So basically, what you're approving today is giving us permission to apply for a grant for thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, that will be paid for by the WHAS Crusade. So we need your approval if that's something. You will recall also, I meant to mention, last month Lance, Lance Boston did an excellent presentation on the indoor playground, very similar to this at the Early Childhood. Make a motion to approve.
Sir. Oh, in favor, say, about saying no? Oh, go ahead, no. Next item, item eight, approval minimum to two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school calendar.
What, I, I gave you some board notes on this, but just to very quickly give you a reminder of what the situation is. On May twenty-second last fall, we began to look at our new school calendar, and there was a piece of legislation that was passed in the last session, KRS one fifty-eight dot zero seventy, and there were some subsections that go along with that. But that was passed, and basically what it does, it allows the school system to go to school on an election day, as long as your building is not... school on an election day, as long as your building is not being used for polling place. So before, it wasn't like that. Before, if you weren't being used, you were still required to close. So we want it to be open on that day. We talked with our county clerk, and we had a favorable response to our request. We would like to go to school on this day, and she began to look, at that point, what we thought she would be looking for another place. As time went on and kind of got away from both of us, we didn't follow back up with each other, and we learned recently that there is not another polling place, and that she is counting on using both our middle school and our primary school on that day. So it's putting us in a difficult position. What we need to do is, we need to not be in attendance on May twenty-second. We have nine to ten makeup days built in our calendar, beginning with February sixteenth, February nineteenth, then we go into March, March, let's see, what do we have there, ninth, and not, and March twelfth, May fourth, and then April second through sixth in the spring break, if we needed that. So with those days being built in, I spoke with the administrative team. We'd like to recommend, for the least disruption possible, that we go ahead and just take the very first makeup day. It would make the most sense and keep everything pretty smooth. We'll begin a campaign of informing our parents and our students if you do choose to go with that date. So that's my recommendation, that we amend the two thousand seventeen eighteen school calendar to be out of session on May the twenty-second and be in session on February the sixteenth.
Do I hear a motion to amend the calendars for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye.
Thank you, and we'll be very careful in those kind of things in the future. Try to assure that we do follow up. The next item on our agenda, Mr. Robey, is our, that's what I keep.
Item nine, approval amendment two thousand seventeen eighteen school calendar.
For eighteen nineteen school calendar, Mr. Hood is here. Things have changed a good deal in the way we put a calendar together. It was, it was difficult in the past. We always have tried to include a good number of people. Mr. Hood has had to really reach out to get some folks involved in the calendar process that have not been there in the past. So he'll tell us a little bit about his committee, and then share with you our first review of the eighteen nineteen calendar. Mr. Hood?
So most importantly, the addition of a board member, Mr. Robey. He's, he's been added to that committee on your behalf for us. So we have always had this committee in place ourselves. They just asked us to add a few extra members to that. Just wanted to let you know real quickly who those people are. From the principals, we had Ryan Clark. We had parent reps from the buildings, Tracy Johnson and Leslie Blinco. We had teacher reps, Katie Buckman and Emily Bean. We had classified staff, Ms. Greta Cecil and June Spaulding. And we had community members, Mike Brooks and Kim Houston. So you know a lot of those people, so you can imagine what kind of lively conversations we were having in the calendar, in the calendar committee. The thing that's most frustrating, I guess, about the calendar is, is the number of days that are already mandated for you, and I think the calendar committee sometimes feels like their hands are tied as to what recommendations they can make. That's, that's not exactly true, although there are several days that are mandated from the state that we, that we get no choice on, but there are several days that we do get to make a decision on. So how this works out is, we met a couple of times together. Multiple emails were sent back and forth. Each representative were to go back to their, their people to let them know what we were presenting, to get input. Yes, we like that. No, we don't. Would you take a look at this? We met with principals, we met with some of our staff. We were talking to Mr. Beck and Ms. Spaulding about the goal days, on where they should be placed strategically in the calendar to best give us what we needed as a school district. So if you'll pull this up, what we've tried to do is put this together for you. You have this. You've been given both of these documents, but this gives us kind of a snapshot of what the date is, and wanted you to have, you know, what it is in writing, because if not, you sometimes look and say, well, is that election day? Well, we kind of put that out for you. So we did use the template, of course, of last year's calendar, just to give us an idea on where to start. And we'll just take a look here, what we're, what we're going to be proposing for you. Again, today is just a review. You will actually bring it for approval at the next board meeting. So we have the first day of school. Well, we'll start with the first goal day. That's a change. We've had the goal day a little bit down in the calendar. We're recommending goal day be the day before students arrive on the first. The next thing on the calendar is Labor Day on September the third, followed by the first week of October, first two weeks being fall break, the first week, the days one through five being intercession. Then in November, the fifth, that's a fourth district KEA day. That's a day that the commissioner, he doesn't mandate what day you choose, but he mandates you have a day. So what we've always done is, we've mirrored that along with the election day that we're out. So fourth district KEA day is the day before that. The Thanksgiving break falls as normal, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. The schedule falls exactly as this, as this is falling today, December the eighteenth being the last day for students, and then intercession the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first. Christmas break ending on January the first for teachers, the second goal day on the second, students come back Thursday the third. January twenty-first, Martin Luther King Day. February the eighteenth, it would be a purple day, would also be a makeup day, so that's a professional development day. March the eighth, same way, professional develop, also a makeup day. First two weeks of April being spring break, those first five days being intercession and possible snow makeup days if needed. May the third is a professional development day, and also a makeup day, that is Oaks Day, if you have not picked up on that. We've got the testing window built in for you, the thirteenth through the thirty-first. We have the twenty-first there, which is election day. It is a PD day, and as we just discussed in the previous item, cannot be a makeup day because of using our schools for polling places. Memorial Day on the twenty-seventh, the last day for students on the thirty-first. So this has, this has gone through multiple channels and avenues and many discussions. Mr. Robey sat in on all of the meetings and was just, you know, he can attest to all of the talk and all of the questions and all of the, hey, let's do this, and it's always seems to be a good idea until you try to find out where you want to put that in the calendar, and then it always goes back to, and, you know, being, it just happened to fall in the calendar to where with just a couple of minor adjustments, going away from four, a two-day, a four-day weekend in March and February, that we were able to get out the last week of May. One other thing I failed to mention, I really, I want to mention this. We also, I met with Nelson County School District to take a look at their plan, and in that meeting was also Mr. Brewer with the Area Tech Center, which is, as you know, we're moving a lot more kids in that direction, and we worked as closely with them as we could, and a lot of these days, a lot of these days that we have control over, they're going to be out as well. There's a few days, you know, we can't, they still have the one-week breaks in October and, and April, that we can't do anything about that, but all of the other days, we really worked closely with them, and I think he's going to be really happy when he sees that if we approved this calendar based on our conversations that we had. So we just, so a lot of people were involved. I'd be glad to answer any question. And again, the new calendar committee also calls for a first reading, and then time to discuss, and then time to think about it, and then next month, you will approve. So if anything, if anything comes up between now and then, you know, you can contact me or contact me or Tosh call, we'll be glad to answer any of those questions, or I can do, answer what I can here for you today. Or since Mr. Robey joined, maybe it's all perfect, and we don't have any questions.
So will be any motion today? We'll review it for thirty days and come back and file. Okay.
Most of the discussion was around first and second week of April, the possibility of makeup days and parents taking trips and scheduling something, and if we do happen to have school, then their kids would be sort of missing schools. A lot of discussions revolved around those days.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate your work.
Item eleven.
Item eleven, our board meeting date and time. This is a KRS one sixty dot two seventy, and we comply with that by each December setting our coming year for our meetings. What we've gone with is what we have in the past, and we'll open the floor for any discussion, but it's the third Tuesday of each month at noon, located here at three oh eight North Fifth Street. Open floor for any discussion.
Motion to approve?
Make motion to approve?
Second? All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye. Those are none. Item twelve, approval travel authorization.
We have one of those for you this time around. This is the DHS course. We'll be making a trip overnight to Louisville, the Gaul House, on February the twenty-first. And there will only be two students involved. This is a pretty special opportunity, according to Ms. Christensen, our director. So we ask that you approve our overnight trip to Louisville for three nights. Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye. Those are none. Item thirteen, approval leave of absence request.
We have three of those. They're in your pocket. Everything is in order, Family Medical Leave Act for each of these, for various reasons. Linda Coward, Jessica Eckner, and Anna Newton will be those folks that we need your approval for leave.
Your approval for leave of absence?
Make motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye. Those are none. Item fourteen, personnel retirement. That's a connection.
Let's make you aware of those. Of course, you will approve these, but I want you to be aware of, we have a position there at the high school, Joe Madison, is moving to Indiana, and we have our three volleyball coaches. And I might just take a second, Logan Coward, Rashay Logan, and Amber Taylor, and just thank these folks publicly for their great work with our volleyball program. We had a late resignation with our, with our coach, Coach Sanchez, and so we really had to scramble to get some folks together, and these were three people that really stepped up and helped us out to get this thing across the way. So that, so they have resigned. They may actually reapply and come back, but that, that position is open, and we have posted it for those that might be interested in being the head coach, and we'll build a coaching staff from there. We have two retirements, Ms. Case and Ms. Rogers. One is a bus monitor, Desne Case, and then Rose Prudence Rogers is cafeteria work. That's all we have. We're there, Mr. Robey?
Flight-based minutes are included. Do I go to executive session?
We appreciate that.
Do I hear a motion to go to executive session for discussion personnel, personnel superintendent's evaluation for KRS sixty-one point eight one oh, one F? And second item, pending litigation discussion of real estate property boundary, KRS sixty-one point eight one oh, one C. Make a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye.
Hi, folks, we are in executive session, and we'll be back when we finish our work. It might take a little while, but we will reconvene at the conclusion of our executive session. So thank you for being here.
All right, Mr. Robey. You're all second?
Okay. We are now back in regular session. And first order of business was to discuss, for our discussion of real property in executive session, we understand that there has been a quit claim deed filed concerning the real property on behalf of Joanna Ryder Smith. The board has heard the facts surrounding the quit claim deed. Any further, is there any further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to instruct the superintendent to begin the process of contesting the claim?
So let motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye.
Okay. Okay, I hear it.
Item number two, that we discussed in executive session, was the superintendent's evaluation. And you want me to read this?
Um.
Here.
Yes, I think it'd be necessary to read that in the break, please.
Okay. Change of address. The first statement is the vision of Barstown City School System. It's building leaders through excellence, innovation, and diversity. Our mission statement, Barstown Independent Schools will engage students in a safe educational environment that focuses on the whole child and establishes strong relationships, demands that academic readers embrace diversity, and requires accomplished instruction in order for all students to maximize their potential. This is what we gauge our superintendent's success on, is how well the vision and mission statements are being adhered to. And this is a statement to address his effectiveness. The above vision and mission statements are guidelines under which this school system strives to attain for our students and staff. Mr. Holskall being superintendent is in charge with the execution and achievements of both of our vision and mission goals and standards. Superintendent's leadership plan is presently being used for the purpose of evaluating superintendent's performance levels. There are seven standards with indicators to determine the superintendent's level of accomplishment for each standard. Last November, the Barstown City Schools completed advanced ed accreditation process. There were two items identified as improvement priorities. In December two thousand sixteen, the Board of Education requested Mr. Holskall to address two of these priorities, both of two thousand seventeen professional growth plan. Mr. Holskall has been evaluated by each board member, using seven standards and two priorities. Based on the evidence presented by Mr. Holskall to support his achievements, he is exemplary in seventh of the nine evaluated categories, and moving from accomplished to exemplary in the remaining two.
Thank you very much, board. Appreciate your confidence in me, and thank you for that excellent evaluation.
Do we have to approve?
Would you need a motion for approval?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the evaluations presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye. Those are none. I guess the next thing is, is do I hear a motion to?
Make a motion to, Chair?
Two hour and a half session.
Frank, Frank has a motion.
Say a motion to. All those in favor say aye. I'm saying aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.